I'd like to call to order the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 11, 2024. First thing on the agenda will be an invocation by Reverend Wes Pitch, pastor of First Presbyterian Church, 318 South Main Street, Reevesville, North Carolina.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here with you and to offer this invocation, so almighty us all to pray. Gracious God, through whom all has come into being and to whom all are gathered in the end, we praise you for your eternal care, your guiding hand, your sustaining love, and your mercy when we stray from the paths you set before us. Just as we pray for your blessing on all people in every place, we pray for this community. Be with the citizens of Reevesville as we strive to be a city of welcome, a place where all can live and work in the freedom and abundance that only you bestow. Guide the leaders of this city, especially Mayor Donald Gorham, Mayor Pro Tim, Harry Brown, councilors Teresa Scoble, William Hairston, Barbara Dejeunette, Shannon Coats, and William Martin. Lead them down the paths of equity and justice, keeping them in the knowledge that their decisions touch the lives of thousands, and that they have a sacred duty to work for all people in Reevesville, those that voted for them and those that did not. May they do nothing for self-service, but work only for the common good. We pray too for city employees, the police and firefighters that keep us safe, the public servants that ensure clean access to water, that pick up our trash and keep life moving forward. We give you thanks for this community, the people that make living here such a joy, and the many blessings given by your gracious hand. Amen.
Would we all rise? The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Concern Agenda. Three items. Is there any one of the three that you'd like to have pulled tonight? If not, we have a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? End of discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing. Consideration of a request to rezone a property at 2509 Richardson Drive, Unit 8, Rockingham County Parcel 170724. From industrial to highway business, the applicant is Central Carolina Kidney Associates, PA, and S&amp;E Investments LLC is the property owner. Z24, I mean 2024-4, enclosure 1, Drew Bigelow, plan number 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Manager Woodard. Central Carolina Kidney Associates is requesting to rezone a parcel located at 2509 Richardson Drive, Rockingham County Parcel Number 170724, from industrial 1 to highway business. This parcel encompasses a total area of .9 acres. There is a multi-unit commercial building located on site where existing offices and retail businesses currently operate. The subject parcel has existing City of Reevesville water and sewer services extending from mains located in the right-of-way on Richardson Drive. The proposed rezoning is in alignment with the existing uses at this location and will not create a new non-conformity. A rezoning to highway business is consistent and compatible with all other existing nearby land uses. The parcels to the north are zoned highway business and office and institutional. The parcels to the east are zoned highway business and industrial 1. The parcels to the south and west are zoned industrial 1. Overall, this area is a mix of commercial and industrial zoning districts. There are no nearby or adjoining residentially zoned parcels. The property is located in Growth Management Area 3, suburban, which surrounds the city center, primarily encompassing the area to the west and southwest. GMA 3 is intended to serve as the primary location for commercial, industrial, and office development. The land development plan indicates that GMA 3 has provisions for commercial growth and an adequate transportation network. Expansion of commercial development is a key objective of GMA 3, and there is a clearly defined need to grow the local economy. Therefore, staff finds the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the 2022 Reevesville Land Development Plan, reasonable and in the public's interest based on the information provided in this report and attached statements of reasonableness and consistency. The planning staff does recommend that the proposed rezoning be approved. You have any questions?
Anyone have any questions, Drew? Okay, thank you, Drew. We will open the public hearing at 6:06. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:06. What is council's favor? There is a prepared motion for this particular.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to recommend the proposed zoning be approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
We have a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second? End of discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have a public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance to extend the corporate limits for 788 Rocky Ford Road, Reevesville A2024-1, enclosure 2, Jason Harden.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Good evening. In your agenda packets is a fully executed request by William Loveless to voluntarily annex 3.8 acres located at 788 Rocky Ford Road. This is Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 184340. Continue with annexation, meaning the property is directly adjacent to corporate limits. Staff has reviewed the annexation petition and finds it to be valid and recommends approval of the ordinance to extend the corporate limit after the required public hearing. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
So you want to have any questions, Jason?
Are they going to develop this land, or?
It's an existing single-family home.
Okay.
It's just in the county.
Do they want to be in the city because of water or sewer, or did they say?
Water service is what's been conveyed to me over it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. We will open the public hearing at 6:09. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? Loveless is here. Would you like to speak for?
We want to get our waters bad, and we're right there on some city limits, you know? And we signed up for that project, we believe. And we just want to get our water hooked up because we've got to do something. You cannot use this groundwater. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Loveless.
Thank you.
Mr. Loveless, I know how you feel. A couple of Sundays ago, my choir was singing, and I was part of it. And all of a sudden, laryngitis jumped on me, and I couldn't do anything but move my lips while I was there. So I understand. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak against? We'll close the public hearing at 6:10. We have a motion for the consideration of the ordinance to extend corporate limits.
I'd like to make a motion for the voluntary annexation request, 788 Rocky Ford Road.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? End of discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next public hearing. Consideration of a rezoning request for a property located at 788 Rocky Ford Road, Reevesville, Rockingham County Parcel 184340, to assign an initial City of Reevesville zoning designation of residential agricultural 20. The applicant and property owner is William Loveless, and Drew will give us the information. Your fastest, Jason.
Thank you again. William Loveless is petitioning to have an initial City of Reevesville zoning designation of residential agricultural 20 assigned to his property located at 788 Rocky Ford Road, Rockingham County Parcel Number 184340. The property owner is petitioning to voluntarily annex this parcel into the City of Reevesville corporate limit, and this parcel will require a city zoning designation upon annexation. The parcel encompasses a total combined area of 3.7 acres, and an existing single-family dwelling is located on site. There is existing water service available at the, located in the right-of-way of Rocky Ford Road. Sewer service is not available, and the closest sewer main is located to the northeast on Holiday Loop Road, approximately 2,350 feet away. This property is located in Growth Management Area 4, rural, which encompasses the areas to the east, southeast, north, and northwest of the city. GMA 4 is predominantly characterized by residential and agricultural development. According to the land development plan, GMA 4 prioritizes large lot development and the preservation of undisturbed natural areas. Therefore, staff finds the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the 2022 Reevesville Land Development Plan, reasonable and in the public's interest based on the information provided in this report and the attached statements of reasonableness and consistency. Staff does recommend that the rezoning be approved. I'll take questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Drew. Mr. Loveless, I understand if you don't want to come back up. You want to come back for? Okay. Well, the public hearing had opened at 6:14. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? Is anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:14. There's a prepared motion for this item or request also.
May I like to make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specified parcels to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? End of discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next public hearing. Consideration of a request to rezone a property located on North Carolina Highway 14, Rockingham County Parcel 170793, from residential agricultural 20 to highway business. Z2024-06, enclosure 4, Jason Harden.
Thank you, Mayor, again. Thank you, Council, City Manager. Donald Willard is petitioning to rezone a property located along NC 14, Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 170793, from residential agricultural 20, RA 20, to highway business HB. The parcel encompasses an area of 36.76 acres. The existing land use of the property is currently undeveloped. There is no water service in the right-of-way of NC 14 adjacent to the property. There is sewer service to the west along Market, northeast Market, at the very edge of the property. So there would need to be some kind of utility extension to get service to this property. The surrounding land use is predominantly rural and residential. Lots to the north, east, and south are zoned residential agricultural 20. To the west, there is a light industrial I-1 district. And also to the east, there is another RA 20 district. RA 20 is a transitional district from the rural county into the city to introduce a gradual density as you transition toward the urban center of the city. So it kind of blends in with lots in the county. While it's not adjacent directly to a highway business zoned lot, NC 14 is a commercial corridor that's primed for development with easy connection to Highway 29 or future I-785. So we expect a lot of development to come along this corridor in the future since it is a major thoroughfare. And just up the road, there is a large highway business district. So it's consistent with the surrounding area along a major thoroughfare. The plan identified two activity centers that were planned for commercial development along this corridor. The first was to the east at the intersection of 29 and NC 14. And there is another development center that's further to the west up near where Walmart is. So it's kind of directly in the center of two development centers. And the development centers were places where we saw the development would really thrive and grow over the next 10 to 20 years. So it's right in an area that's prime for development. The zoning ordinance defines highway business as a district located on major thoroughfares. Therefore, it's consistent with the ordinance's definition of highway business. Moreover, there is a large highway business district just north of this property, as I said. And the property is located in Growth Management Area 4 of the land development plan, which is the rural district, which encompasses the area to the east, southeast, north, and northwest of the city, which is more of the kind of undeveloped area. Although if we see more development, we may bring forward an amendment before council to maybe possibly change that if we keep seeing these highway business zonings and large commercial developments, because it may be changing a little bit quicker than what we anticipated if this continues. So the land development plan notes that GMA 4 has an existing road network that can easily accommodate growth. However, it does limit commercial development, but it doesn't exclude commercial development entirely. So we would say it's still consistent with GMA 4 at this time. Therefore, staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2022 Reevesville Land Development Plan. The planning staff recommends that the proposed rezoning be approved, and planning board unanimously recommended that the proposal be approved at their last meeting. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Great parcel, and I think it has just unbelievable amount of opportunities because it's such a great parcel, and the location is so good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Public hearing will open at 6:19. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for?
Mayor, City Council.
Would you give the name and address?
Donald Willard, and 115 Annabrook Court. I'm the one developing the property. So working with a developer closely to actually move the business. I've been in business here in city, which most of you know, for 17 years. So we're looking to just have a home of our own so that my daughter and son-in-law can extend the business and stay doing what we love to do here in Reevesville. Questions?
Thank you.
Does there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Anyone who'd like to speak against? Close the public hearing at 6:20. There's a prepared motion for this rezoning also.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specialized parcel to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
End of discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. It was unanimous. Next public hearing. Consideration of a text amendment request to amend Article 7, Section 2 definitions and Section 12 signs requiring permits to introduce awning signs as a new signage type. T2024-1, enclosure 5, Drew Bigelow.
For the third and final time tonight, planning staff is petitioning to add awning signs as a new sign type to Article 7 of the Reevesville zoning ordinance. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not distinguish between hanging canopy signs and awning surface signs. As a new permitted sign type, awning signs will be defined in Section 2 of Article 7 as a sign that is part of an awning face or other protective canvas, plastic, or metal cover fixed to a building and located over a door, entrance, window, or other outdoor area. Colors, stripes, or patterns on an awning's surface shall not be considered signage. The design standards for awning signs will be laid out in Section 12 of Article 7. The design standards for awning signs will allow up to 25% of the total surface area measured in square feet of the awning face, including the drip flap, to be permitted as signage. Awning sign projection will be limited to five feet within the right-of-way, and only one awning sign shall be permitted for every 10 feet of building facade facing a street. Awning signs will be limited to the central business zoning district here in the downtown area. Staff recognizes the need to create this new signage type as it helps to expand potential advertising space for businesses in our downtown area. Staff has evaluated requirements for awning sign types in other municipalities around the triad and has found our new design standards to be comparatively accommodating. Therefore, staff views this request to be reasonable. The planning staff recommends that the proposed text amendment be approved. I'll take questions.
Questions, April?
One question I have, and it's always been a concern of mine, that we have some awnings in our downtown that have just been so neglected, they are so dirty, mildewed. Is there any way we can incorporate into this that they have to be maintained?
So we are legally constrained in how we can approach aesthetics when it comes to signage, but staff is more than willing to look into maybe maintenance standards for awning signage going forward. And we can look at other municipalities around the triad, possibly Burlington, and see how they do things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Drew. Public hearing will open at 6:24. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the text amendment request? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against the text amendment request? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:25. What's the pleasure of council on the text amendment request?
May I make the motion that we approve text amendment T2024-01.
Motion?
Second.
And we have a second? End of discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next public hearing. Consideration of a proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 for the ABC Board in enclosure 6, W. Clark Turner, ABC Board Chairman and former city councilman.
Mayor, and members of city council, I'm here tonight to present the grateful ABC Board's annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024, ending June 30, 2025. The primary drivers during the preparation of this budget include protecting operating costs required to sustain acceptable levels of customer service and projecting sales revenue to fund those costs. Highlights of the budget include projected income $3,615,000, cost of sales $1,879,800, taxes related to sales $831,450, operating expenses $685,000, capital outlay for a new roof on the existing store $25,000, mortgage and interest expenses $95,000, profit distributions This budget has been prepared in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 188-702 and reflects the Board's commitment to fulfill its mission based on all known information. And I will add that we have a lot of elixirs out there that would ease your pain when you're filled with these popular products that are coming, and we invite you to visit our store. Any questions?
Any questions, Claude?
I have a question. Any idea on what you're going to do with the second?
Excuse me?
Are you going to reopen the second store?
We don't know yet. It depends upon the development of property out there, and it was not proving to be profitable if we had such low purchases out there. So we had to close the store. But we still own it, and we are still planning that in some day we might reopen it.
Questions?
Is that just one big $281,000 loan this for?
Yes, that's part of it, yes.
And it's $95,000 a year payments on this loan, I'm assuming?
Yes.
What's that loan due?
I beg your pardon?
How long is that loan due for?
I think it's due to expire in two more years.
Any other questions, Claude? Public hearing will open at 6:29. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? Opposed operating budget? Proposed operating budget. Anyone who'd like to speak against the proposed operating budget? We will close the public hearing at 6:30. Final public hearing, consideration of a proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 for the city of Reedsville, North Carolina, enclosure seven, Summer Woodard, City Manager.
Mayor and council, what you have before you tonight is the public hearing portion of our proposed fiscal year 2425 budget. We've had two budget work sessions. The first was April 22nd, and then the budget was presented in great detail with a detailed PowerPoint at your May 14th meeting. Then we had a follow-up work session on May 23rd. So I'd like to take this time just to go over some budget highlights. The objective of this proposed budget is to ensure the needs of our citizens are met in a cost-effective manner. The proposed citywide budget is $39,781,750 versus our current 2324 budget amount of This is an increase of $6,383,300, which is related to increased personnel costs and increases in departmental operations due mainly to inflation along with capital needs. After accounting for payments and transfer between funds, the total true proposed budget for this proposed fiscal year is $33,856,750. This budget proposed a 4% cost of living adjustment and up to a 3% merit increase based on annual employee evaluations. The total cost of this would be $710,000. The police pay plan and compression study is also included in this proposed budget. The total cost is $310,000. This budget includes one floating holiday for all full-time employees, two new positions are budgeted in community development, one customer service position for the customer service window, and one building inspection position. These two positions are desperately needed as 1,210 new residential homes are projected to be built in the next two years. The city health insurance is insured through the Municipal Trust of North Carolina League of Municipalities for our health insurance. The increase for the city came in at 9%. This proposed budget has absorbed this increase, allowing employees to continue coverage at no cost. Rates to electively cover spouses and/or dependents did increase 9% for employees. The 9% resulted in a $1,000 increase cost per employee in eligible retirees, bringing the annual cost per participation to $13,000. This increase represents $216,500 for the proposed 2425 budget. Capital outlay request for general fund totaled $1,308,360. Capital outlay was cut by $975,236. Carryover funding is recommended this fall to fund the general fund capital outlay that was cut. In what was left in the capital outlay for this proposed year is three patrol cars, one single axle dump truck, and it's proposed to be funded through this year's budget. The three patrol cars totaled $166,800, and the one dump truck totaled $166,000. This is a total of $332,800 proposed for general fund capital outlay request. The city of Reedsville's current total property value is estimated at $1,235,636,595. The city's current property tax rate is 0.7390 cents per $100 evaluation. The city's current assist valuation produces $122,130 per one cent. The proposed fiscal year 2425 budget recommends a tax decrease from 0.739 to 0.660. This is the lowest tax rate in 24 years. NC counties must conduct a county-wide reevaluation of all real property within the county at least every eight years. Rockingham County NC has completed the countywide evaluation for 2024. The last countywide reevaluation occurred in 2020. NC General Statute 159-11 requires each taxing unit to publish a revenue-neutral property tax rate as part of its budget for the fiscal year following a reevaluation of real property. Even at a revenue-neutral rate, some property owners will still pay more in taxes. The city of Reedsville's revenue-neutral rate with a 0.80 growth rate would be 0.5713 cents per $100 evaluation. Using the new tax base of $1,611,247,542, one cent would generate $159,255. This budget proposes a 0.660 cent tax rate. Again, this would be the lowest tax rate, this would be a tax rate decrease from our current tax rate of 0.739. General fund is cut to the bare bone. If council wishes to decrease the tax rate further, please direct us where to cut. The only cuts left to make are health insurance and retirement increases, the COLA, merit, pay plan, the three police cars, or a single axle dump truck. In reference to our water and sewer fund, the last utility rate increase for the city of Reedsville was in 2020. This proposed budget includes a 35% water and sewer rate increase. This rate increase is absolutely necessary in order to ensure safe and clean drinking water. If council does not wish to increase the utility rates, please direct me where to make those cuts. Additional cuts would have to be looking at operating expenses, personnel, or capital equipment and projects. This proposed budget is balanced as required by law and continues to provide existing services while meeting the governing board's priorities and policies. Thank you for the opportunity to present this budget.
Any questions of manager Wood?
I'd like to make a comment on behalf of the city council. We would like to thank you, all of the department heads and your staff. This was a difficult job, and we know it was hard because there was a lot of things that had to be taken into consideration, both good and bad, you know? And we didn't want to raise water bill, but we know that that's what we had to do in order to maintain the standards that our citizens expect. And thank you so much. It was difficult, and we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
There have been many cities and counties who have suffered because they've lacked in doing what needs to be done each year to enhance things. I'm glad we're progressive in moving towards serving our citizens the best that we possibly can. Public hearing opens at 6:37. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the operating budget for fiscal year 2024-2025? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against the operating budget for 2024-2025? Seeing no one, do we have a motion?
May I make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, city budget?
Got a motion? Have a second, end of discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, it's unanimous. Could we back up to the operating budget for the ABC? I got a little distracted. I think we failed to...
There is no action required in that. We just offered the ABC Board a forum.
Oh, just...
There's no other action.
Okay. I wasn't for sure. All right, next item on the agenda, consideration of police pay plan study, enclosure eight, Matt Reese, PTRC.
I appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to talk to you. It's good to see some of you again. It's good to make some new people in person for those I've not met yet.
Good to be seen.
Thank you for bringing the delegate to the PTRC. So we appreciate that. Appreciate your time and efforts in that. I have a PowerPoint presentation, but I believe it's also a part of your agenda packet. And as I understand it, it's enclosure eight. I'm happy to open up and show the PowerPoint, or if you think you're adequate with your enclosure eight, I'll just speak from it. Is there preference?
No.
Just one, okay, great. Fantastic. So what you'll see on the second page, your At-A-Glance summary, this is just the overall movement of the base pay. You've got $193,000. The traditional implementation that you're familiar with is an employee and having this done of one and a quarter percent per grade change. That movement in and of itself is going to move you from roughly a 90%, 89% of the market to 100% at the entry level. That's the most conservative analysis that we can run when we're looking at compensation. It's the traditional approach that the city has always taken. So what the result from that was is that it looked like there was a lot of compression going on, even more so than a normal salary might generate, where lots of salaries were going to the exact same dollar amount. So that's where you see, and I should state that that's a two-grade adjustment from police officer one up through lieutenant, and then a one-grade adjustment for police captain through major. And then that $61,000 that you see there at the bottom, that's something that we normally don't do, but when we looked and saw the severity of compression that was going on, we really needed to take an additional step, more so than what we normally would do. So that's the $61,000 that you see in that, which is the $245,000 base salary cost. You heard with the budget, there's additional dollars that have to be put with that for fringe and so forth, and so that's the total cost that you've seen reflected. So let's look to the next page, and this sort of sets some context, because this is really kind of important to understand. What you see there is just a copy of your existing pay plan, right?
I apologize, we don't...
I am sorry. Well, hang on.
Got some minutes, I better leave the PowerPoint.
Excuse me a moment. I'll be happy to... I might need some technical assistance in... I enjoy this so much better. This is really going to be impressive stuff. Have any jeopardy music to play while we're waiting? I'm sorry. I'm okay, I'll just... There we go. Isn't that pretty? Isn't that wonderful? That's what I thought was your enclosure eight. So, your At-A-Glance summary, as soon as you can see there, is the $193,000. It's the traditional method, the one and a quarter percent proportional implementation. We'll talk some more about that, so you can see how that looks. That's the main traffic to move you from 89% to 100% at entry level. That's the two-grade adjustments for police officer one up through lieutenant, and then a one-grade adjustment for captain and major. You heard me talk about the really extreme compression that we saw that was just really just unacceptable, and so that's the $61,000 additional dollars that we normally don't spend. That's the first time we've ever done that in Reedsville to do that. And then that gets you to your 254, I believe Summer said 315, something like that. That's the fringe swing on all of that. So here's where it was, right? This is the pay plan that you know and love. The reason that this is significant is that this pay plan communicates a variety of things, right? It communicates majorly transparency. This is the pay ranges for all of the positions within the city. It's in this scheme of grades and ranges. All of those ranges are, almost all of those ranges, all the significant ranges, are roughly 50% apart, and then 5% spread between each sequential one. So that grid, if you will, right, that 50% spread, that 5% separation between each grade becomes really important because all of the recommendations are going to come back and work to fit within that scheme, right? That's the way this published pay plan is intended to operate, that you have the grouping of multiple classes at the same grade within the same range. That's a really significant philosophical thought, right? So just in the publishing of this, we've already stepped four or five steps down the road of how this needs to look, right? It doesn't have to look like this, but this is the way that it looks in Reedsville. This is also the way it looks in almost all local governments in North Carolina. A few have a different-looking pay plan. A few have multiple pay plans, right? And those are all options that are available to you, but this is the context in which we start the study from. So the study is really looking at this document and saying, what changes are needed in this document? So it's not a study of individuals. It's not a study of individual pay. It's a study of this document. Is this document and that range associated with the work that we're observing? Is it accurate? Does it need to be improved upon, all right? And so this is the way we go about doing that evaluation. This is from the American Compensation Association. This is the document or the graph that is talking about establishing a job worth hierarchy, hierarchy from low to high, right? And this is that process. That's really what a pay study is doing. It's taking that existing hierarchy that I just showed you and saying, is that right? Do we need to make some changes to that? What's the process that we engage in? First, you got to engage in some form of job analysis. That's not performance analysis. That's not looking at the individual. That's looking at the job. What's the role? What's the work? What's the structure? How do you do that? You can do that with a written description, or you don't have to. You could just say, okay, look, we're going to take it based on what we understand that work to be. But we use a written description, and this is through a real heavy, heavy lift that some of you will remember. There's this wonderful document called a Position Description Questionnaire. It's about 14 pages long, and you write down everything that you do. You hand it over to your supervisor. Your supervisor reviews it. They sign off on it. The reason I want to emphasize that to you is that's a heavy lift by your employees, and it's a really, really good product, right? Because your employees did it. They're signing off on it, saying, this is my job. The city retains that document, which is a good thing. So in that way, there's a frame of reference. If other issues come up, you've got this piece of update that happens roughly about every three years that says, I've looked at my job. I've signed off on my job. These are the components of my job. This is the knowledge, skills, and abilities I need to complete my job, right? So that is a really, really good piece of work that I don't want to go over because it's a really hard lift by your employees. So then PTRC steps in at that point. We receive those questionnaires. We do interviews with every employee that wants to be interviewed, trying to get a real personal feel for what all those jobs are. And then at this point, we move into one of two forms of analysis. And so you see the circle is the job content. Job content means is that we're looking more at what is the organizational structure? What are the relationships of occupational families within that hierarchy? We're not going to concentrate exclusively and primarily on market. We could. That can be an approach. It's sound, as you see in the graph, but that's not the approach that we use here. That's not the approach that the majority of local governments in North Carolina use because we have this published pay plan that's very transparent, that we're putting them into that schema. So there's times when we want to look at that and have more of an internal equity, more of a collaborative process that is engaged in rather than strictly trying to score at a particular market point. So we could do it differently, but I want to emphasize how that's done. Not to say that market is completely ignored. It's not. Market is blended in, so that's the reconciliation of those internal and external factors that's blended together. And ultimately, what is happening is the expression in the assignment of classes to grade. What is the grade that's going to be assigned to this class going forward, right? So that's really the process that's there. But let's talk about the market for a minute, right? Because there's some really interesting things going on in the market. In this graph, what you see here with these two graphs... In this graph, what you see here, what these two graphs are really showing you is that we're in, you've heard the word, it's a little tiresome at this point, unprecedented, right? But in our careers, what we all remember is what do we need to do in Reedsville to attract businesses to come into our community? Because we have lots of people in our community that want to work. We have more available labor than we have jobs. What this graph is showing is that during the recession that occurred during COVID and really just before that, that paradigm flipped. We had more jobs than we had people, right? And we're still on a very narrow basis. COVID was not the cause of that factor. We'd been talking for decades about the silver tsunami, about the baby boomer generation leaving the workforce, and COVID made us see it in drastic timeframe, right? So what you see there is on that top graph, you see where the curve inverts, right? Now, we're coming back together. Things are getting back to a more normal-looking picture in terms of the availability of labor. But that bottom graph really shows you, right? It's got that spike there for the grade recession and then another spike that you see on out to the right for COVID. But what that graph is really showing you is that for a long, long time, we had roughly three people available for every opening. There were times we had more than that, right? But at best, we're down to a one-to-one relationship right now. That's just a really tight labor market. So why do I mention that? I mention that because you may want to think about doing things differently, right? This may be that time when you want to provide different directions. You want to zig instead of zag because the market looks different. Now, what has been happening over the last six months has been normalization, right? There have been, the market is cooling off most definitely. There is not the demand that there has been for it. Is that trend going to just kind of keep on and we're going to be where we are for the next 12 months or so? Does the upcoming election have any change in that trajectory? If I could answer those questions for you, I would not be standing before you right now. So those are sort of the big issues that you have to think about. Where are we going with this, right? How does that look on a more practical basis? Well, it looks like this. So when we get down to brass tacks, what are we talking about? Our competition against other folks? What you see here is, this is the graph for entry level, police officer one. We're primarily looking at entry level. So that's the blue lines that you see going across there, right? The first line is Reedsville, so it's going to show you where Reedsville's current minimum is with the blue. And then it's going to show you what we're proposing to change in the orange stack above that. So that's the change that's occurring as police officer is moving from grade 24 to grade 26. Grade 26 is at that 44, 957, and that's going to score out roughly at 98% of all this market, just below that average, just a bit there, right? So you see the next line down is average. It'll show you where the average of all that data below it is. That's going to show you where that line is on the blue. That blue line, and where we're intersecting with that blue line is the real, or blue lines is really the driver of our decision. That's the most conservative analysis we could make. Now, you see another stack that's on there. That other stack on there is what is the actual average pay reported from that employer for all of their incumbents that they have in that class. You can see that gray line goes on out. Some cases, it goes out tremendously, right? When you look at Alamance County and you look at Graham and you look at some of those, right, that it's way on out there for the actual average of incumbents. We're not looking at the gray line. We could look at the gray line, but we're not looking at the gray line. We're looking at the blue. So the driver of our decision, should you be at 26 or should you be at 27, are those blue lines that you see there, right? And then the orange is the stack that's on top of that, showing you the change from this study. So this is the first level of supervision. The first one was the benchmark, not all classes are benchmark, the benchmark class for entry-level law enforcement. Second benchmark, this one's the first level of supervision, law enforcement. That's the police sergeant. We're moving that from a 29 to a 32. 57, 379 is the minimum for that. That scores at 96%. You can see where those lines intersect. That gold line going down, I'm just going to give you a quick visual of where you land in terms of all of those salaries. You got some that you'll lead, you got some that you're way behind on that, right? We're trying to tie in to where that average is. The last benchmark that I've got for you is police captain, moving from 35 to 36 at a 73, 273 start. That's at 98% of that market as well. You can see what the stacks are on all of that and where that moves. Again, I want to emphasize to you that this data is really not driving a dollar assignment. It's driving a grade assignment, right? Because we're still trying to put it back into that context of what's the internal relationships? What's the relationship between PO and sergeant? What's the relationship between sergeant and lieutenant? What's the relationship between lieutenant and captain and so forth? We're looking at that entire occupational family, seeing where relationships are because there's some are where we can reasonably compress that, where can we not? How do we move that forward? Both in the context of what's the internal relationships within the department, in terms of reporting and those kinds of relationships? And then what does the market say, right? There's discretion and judgment in that. I will be most forward with you in that, right? It is not a straightforward, necessary lining up process. If you want a straightforward lining up process, we need to move more back towards the market analysis frame, right? So this is where we have the three benchmarks that I've got for you. Now, how do we move from that old pay plan to the new pay plan, right? How do we move from someone being at the grade 27 to being at the grade 29, right? So this is that showing the movement of grade 24 to grade 26 with the current assignment of police officer, right? You've got the graph there that's showing you the grades, showing you how it's 50% apart, 5% for each of those grades that's there. And this is this proportional implementation. The reason that we call it proportional is that to move from a grade 24 to a grade 26, as you can see there, that's a 10% change for a minute, right? If I'm below that minimum, I'm going to move to that minimum. Move to that minimum, right? So it's possible there could be a 9% and 10% change for an incumbent with that. If I'm at the very minimum of the current 24 and I got to move to the minimum of the 26, then there could be that, right? The proportional says if I'm ahead of that, if I'm already above that market point, that new minimum salary grade at 26, right? What's going to happen to me? And so the proportional implementation says, let's give a 25% basis point, one and a quarter percent of 5% for each grade that moves. That's to address compression. It doesn't mean it's going to resolve all the compression in the world. It's going to address that compression. That method is trying to balance, right? Affordability, doing the studies on a regular basis and being able to move the pay plan forward, as well as not so compress folks' salaries together that it really becomes unburdenous and untenable, right? But it is trying to balance those two, and it is siding on affordability, right, to get that. That factor could be different. It doesn't have to be one and a quarter. It could be 2.5. It could be 3.65, right? It's proportional to whatever you want to do. Why do we have the 1.25? Because you've used that for a long, long time, right? This study is a little different in terms of where the market conditions are, where things are. If you were to say, hey, look, let's tweak that differently, or we don't have enough money, let's dial it down, let's dial it up, whatever those conditions are for you, you have the ability to provide that direction to management, and we'll follow suit, right? Now, this is a one-third study. So the concept is, is that what we would do in this third, we would repeat in the rest of the thirds for the rest of the city. So that's something to think about, right? If we're going to do something, we would do it differently. Now, you've heard me say, hey, we had this additional dollar amount that we spent. So the graph at the bottom is trying to address that. It's giving you an example of four officers there, showing you where they currently were, showing you the movement from a 24, current grade CG, 24 to proposed grade 26, showing you the change that's occurring there, the proposed minimum, and where those folks are going, right? So you can see that some of those are moving to the minimum, right? Actually, you can see that all of those folks are moving to the minimum. This is what we saw in almost all of your classes. All of them moved the exact same dollar figure. We've never had that before in Reedsville. In all the years I've been doing the work for you, we've never had all of those classes going to the exact same dollar figure. With that exceptional result, that's why we said, okay, look, look at this months of service, which is that column far on the right, say, okay, how many months of service does that person have in that class? In that class? And then give a dollar amount for each of those months of service, right? And then move them out that way. So that really helps separate those folks out. So that's that additional 61,000 that we talked about. We wouldn't have recommended that if the compression had not been as severe as it was, right? Why was the compression like that? I can't tell you exactly. I think my best guess on that is, is that there's been anecdotally a lot of new folks that have been hired into the department. Those folks have been hired at the minimum of that. We moved that whole grade 10%. So there wasn't any stretching out in the time that those folks have been with you. So we captured this study just at the perfect storm to have that kind of result. Would it occur in another department? It's possible. So then would we want to come back and present you with a way to address that salary compression? Maybe, right? But it really was stark. I want to really emphasize that to you. In all your classes that we studied, we had that same issue. So that's the movement that's there. That's what's going on with the implementation, both what we traditionally do and then what we did different for this study. And then that really brings us back to just what the salary, what the overall recommendation is and how we got to that point. I'm happy to respond to some questions and go back and look at subsequent slides if you need me to.
Any questions?
I have a question about a comment you made, that the reason that we got into this situation with employment was the baby boomers.
Yes.
Okay, took a long time to get to that.
Yes.
So what do you attribute the change to now that in only two years we're leveling out?
That's a really good question. So I think there's, I think there's multiple answers for that. So I think that, one, some of the movement that the Federal Reserve has been trying to do with rates to cool the economy is probably being successful, right? The investments that could be made if rates were lower are being held off of, I'm not going to do that expansion, I'm not going to do that. I think, so there's that macroeconomy, if you will. The second factor is that I think after almost 36 months of really desperately trying to fill positions and being unsuccessful with that, that a lot of employers are saying, you know what? We're just going to do things differently. And then that do things differently becomes really tricky to nail down. I will have to tell you that I went to the Bowman Gray race the other night. I've been to the Bowman Gray race recently, but it's something to do. We'll put it that way. Then, before you go to Bowman Gray, you get to Kermit's, Kermit's Hot Dogs, which is an institution in Winston-Salem, to go and get your Kermit's hot dogs before you go to the Bowman Gray race. I found out the hard way that if you want your Kermit's hot dog, you best get there by four because they're not open after that because you don't have staff. So I think there's these changes in operations that are going on that are, you probably could tell me other stories of places that you know that are similar in changing their operational hours and staffing levels and so forth. The other component that's happening is increasingly more and more employers are seeking alternatives like automation. And the call centers are moving more towards being an automated artificial intelligence model and all of that sort of thing to try to reduce that. Where all of that comes out will be a real interesting question to see. Look, can we stay this level that's there and do that? I don't know.
Thank you.
Mayor Council, if I could just piggyback on a couple of things. I did just want to point out the, and Matt, if you don't mind, if you'll email me that PowerPoint, I'll make sure Council gets that. But the numbers that you saw, that does not take into consideration the COLA or the merit. So the numbers that you saw before you did not have that COLA or merit calculated into that. So you could see some employees up to a 7% on top of what you saw. The second part I wanted to address, and Matt, if you want to speak on this, I knew, I think just information transparency is key. The cost of this study, if you want to, if you want to talk a little bit about that, I know there's sometimes some misconception to the public and to citizens that this study's, you know, we pay you hundreds of thousands of dollars. Just to address that.
I would need, I would need most transparent. The city pays $5,600 for my fee on an annual basis. I think if you went out and tried to place that in the market, you'd find that that's pretty conservative. We'll put it that way. So that is what it is on that. And we're thrilled to be a part of doing. I'm glad that I've been able to come up here for all of the decades that I have. Look forward to continuing to serve you. Thank you, Commissioner or Councilman Martin, for being part of the board at PTRC. We're happy to do it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your partnership.
Okay, what is the council's favor on the consideration of the police pay plan study?
Mayor Council, I'm sorry, that was just for information.
Just for information? Okay, good. Next, consideration of the adoption of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and the resolution of understanding accompanying the budget adoption. In closure nine, manager order.
Sue, Mayor Council, thank you so much. On behalf of administration and our staff, we appreciate your consideration and approval of the fiscal year 24, 25 budget. Sue, thank you so much for that and passing that. The next part of the agenda is just taking the ordinance and looking to approve that for the fiscal year 24, 25.
Any questions of the manager? We have a budget ordinance and a resolution of understanding. Do we have to do both separate? What, can we do them together? Some separate? Okay, consideration of the budget ordinance for 2024, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second, and a discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, the budget adoption, resolution of understanding. Got a motion and a second and a discussion. All right, those in favor, raise your right hand. Consideration of cleanup budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year 2023, 2024. In closure 10, manager order.
Mayor Council, near the end of each fiscal year, a cleanup amendment is prepared to pick up smaller budgetary items that have occurred during the year. These items are collected from one adjustment rather than going to city council time and again for smaller amounts. While some of the items seem insignificant, the related departments depend on being able to use the funds for the purpose given. In addition, some budget-in-line items may have exceeded the budget, and those funds are being utilized for current needs. Attached is the listing of items totaling $440,991 for amounts that have been collected this year that need to be reorganized, or, excuse me, recognized. The corresponding expense accounts are also shown for each item. None of the items above require use of fund balance. So again, this is a budget cleanup. The other item of note is, in addition to Gatsby Statement Number 96, subscription-based information technology agreements, change the accounting for multiple-year software subscriptions. The full amount of the payments to be made should be recorded as a lease proceeds and capital outlay in the year the contract begins. Then when the payments are made, they will reduce the related debt that has been recorded. It does not change the dollar amount of the transactions over the course of the contract. The city began using Office 360 in the current fiscal year under a three-year subscription with annual payments of $50,634.25. Therefore, the budget needs to be adjusted to record capital outlay of $151,902.75, and the related debt proceeds as revenue. So we're just asking for cleanup of the budget ordinance. If city council so desires to approve, the motion would be to approve attached budget ordinance amendment as provided.
Any questions of the manager? Do we have a motion for budget ordinance 19?
Make a motion that we approve budget ordinance 19, a cleanup amendment, budget ordinance amendment.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, consideration of extension of a, of the water sales agreement with the city of Greensboro. Closure 11, manager order.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The city of Reedsville and the city of Greensboro jointly announced a water supply agreement on April on April 1st of 1999. On May 26th of 1999, both municipalities officially signed the agreement. The current agreement is set to expire on June 30th of 2024. The agreement is up for review and renewal every five years. The city of Greensville staff and our city attorney have reviewed the agreement along with the city of Greensboro staff and their city attorney. Please fund attached the proposed interlocal agreement between the city of Greensville and the city of Greensboro. City staff recommends approving the agreement as presented. If council agrees with staff recommendation, the appropriate motion would be to approve the interlocal water agreement between the city of Greensville and the city of Greensboro as presented.
Any questions about the water sales agreement? See, done, is there a motion for the interlocal municipal water agreement?
Okay.
Got a motion?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, awarding bid of, let's see, consideration of CDBG dash NR bid awards, award to 706 Lindsay Street, Reesville, Jason Hall.
Thank you again, Mayor, Councilman, City Manager. One more thing and I'll be done. In your individual packets, I've included the proposed bid award package to rehabilitate a fourth home, 706 Lindsay Street, as a part of our CDBG and our housing rehabilitation project. As you may recall, a few months ago, I brought forward three bid awards for the first three houses, and I'm happy to report that the first one is done, the second one is basically done, and then the third one's in progress. So we're making very good progress on rehabilitating these houses. Included in your packets is the bid tabulation sheet along with the contract award and liability insurance certificate for the contractor. A low bidder was Brookdale NC Environmental with a bid of $131,050. NC Department of Commerce has approved a substantial rehab for this house, as all bids received exceeded the $72,000 Housing and Urban Development Agency HUD limit who governs this program. It's a federal grant program. No budget adjustment is necessary to award the bid as funds are already present. Staff recommends that the proposed bid be awarded to the respective contractor and ask for council approval on this item. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Jason. Mr. Counsel's favor on the bid award for 706 Lindsay Street? Low bid?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. We had a towel to sit in there. Couple of them. All right, we move on to public comments. Is there anyone who'd like to address the council tonight? While we're wrapping that up, we'll go on ahead and move on with the city manager's report, enclosure 14.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We will recognize our employee of the year at our July 9th, 2024 city council meeting Jeremiah Manager's Report. So we'll be excited to have that employee join us next month. We are also very excited, the city of Greensville is excited to announce the hiring of Mr. Montana Brown as the Director of Marketing and Economic Development. The city received 41 applicants. We selected 10 candidates to move forward to a first round interview with Assistant City Manager Haywood Cloud, Human Resource Director Mia Basinger, Assistant City Manager Chris Phillips, Interim City, Interim Economic Development Director Mike Williamson, myself. The second round of interviews was with management team members on Friday, May the 17th and Monday, May the 20th. We're very excited and Montana's here, so if you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself a little bit, he does have a start date of July 1st. He comes from the city of High Point as the Economic Development Manager, and I believe we'll have a press release that'll go out either later today or tomorrow. So, Mr. Brown, welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Gorham, ladies and gentlemen of city council, madam manager, my name is Montana Brown. As you very greatly introduced me, I am very appreciative of this opportunity that you guys are offering me to be the first Director of Marketing and Economic Development for the great city of Reedsville. Truthfully, I can't think of a better place to be than in North Carolina, in the triad, and more specifically in Reedsville for the years coming forward. You know, early on in the process, I can tell that you guys are an incredible team. You guys are in an incredible location. You're poised for a lot of growth, and I can't wait to work along with staff and you guys to implement your vision for the city moving forward. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We look forward to joining.
Yes, we do. We're getting to know you guys more in the future.
I like the last name, too. I agree.
Thanks so much.
He's got a movie star first name, so it goes along with that.
Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you. Welcome to our team. Just a couple of updates, surplus property, the city managers report all surplus property that has been sold by the end of each fiscal year. For fiscal year 23, 24, the city of Reedsville sold $34,927 in surplus property. The attached detailed list of surplus properties in your miscellaneous tab, I just needed to report that. Also, each year, the urban archery, the city managers report annually to city council how many urban archery permits are issued each fiscal year. For fiscal year 23, 24, no permits were issued. The city of Reedsville adopted the urban archery ordinance in 2018, and since the adoption of this ordinance, the city of Reedsville has only issued one permit. And Mayor and Council, that concludes my monthly report.
Okay, well, move now to council members' reports. Mayor Protan.
Thank you, Mayor. I've only got a couple of things. On May the 18th, I attended the city employee celebration at the archery facility. The thing was well planned, well attended, so my hats off to the city manager and all of the staff that were involved in that. Also, on May the 21st, I attended a city, I mean, a budget meeting here at city hall. And also on the 21st, the YFC Board of Directors meeting. And on the 24th, ribbon cutting for Splash Pad. That's turned out to be the hottest place for young people to go in this city.
Yeah. Councilmember Dejeanay.
Thank you. I had a pretty good month this month, and on May the 10th, I attended the two-on-two meeting with city hall. May the 14th, I attended the Reedsville Advisory RDC Community Meeting. May the 14th, I attended another city council call meeting, budget meeting. On May the 18th, I attended the employee appreciation and kudos to the city for recognizing your staff. I think everyone had a wonderful time. On May the 22nd, it's May 23rd, I attended the ethics training at city hall. And on May the 30th, I attended a Kiwanis meeting. Enjoyed it very much.
Councilmember Coates.
On May 7th, attended the two-on-twos here at city hall. On the 10th, attended the quilt square available there on Settle Street on the corner. On May 16th, I attended a law enforcement officer lunch that was provided by the local Masonic Lodge here, number 384, here right down the street here on Main Street. Very, very well put together, good food. On May 22nd, attended the Eggs and Issues Breakfast, which was held in Stoneville at Sharon, I believe it was convention center there. On the 24th, also attended the ribbon cutting and splash for the Splash Pad. And I will say, on those hot days riding by, there's a lot of people there.
Oh, yeah.
In fact. And then on the 29th, attended the water rate adjustment meeting that was held at the Carriage House at the Penn House. And also attended the South End School meeting, which was held at South End School, reference to the ongoing discussions about a new school being built.
Councilman Martin.
I don't have any reports.
Councilwoman Scoop.
Thank you, Mayor. On the, May 15th, I attended the Salvation Army Awards Luncheon. The budget session on May 21st. On May 23rd, I arranged for Lieutenant Carter to speak at our Kiwanis Club meeting. And then on June the 7th, Dave Gerald's funeral service, which was very sad. You know, Dave was such an important part of our downtown, not only his self, but his business there, Cafe 99. And one of those things that we never thought we would lose, but we have, and it's a big hole in our downtown Reedsville, and it's a big hole in the hearts of our, of our citizens in Reedsville, so we'll certainly miss Dave. I'd like to make a couple of comments very quickly. Again, I feel I have to defend my role as city council member and that of my fellow city council members. I understand that as my role as a council member is to act as part of the Reedsville City Council and not as an individual. I understand that we only conduct business through Dave, through duly conveyed meetings and full view of public, of the public. And I recognize that establishing and maintaining effective work and relationships with fellow council members and our city manager sometimes can be challenging, but it's a very important part of our job. And it's a growing concern of many citizens in Reedsville that there is a conflict of interest with council members, with local businesses, and friends of those businesses in buying and selling of properties and sharing confidential information. I'd like to set the record straight that we, as a council, take an oath that we understand that our actions and our decisions will be what is best for the city of Reedsville, not, not on behalf of a favorite business or a family member or a friend. We will make every effort to stop any such rumors, and I trust these rumors are not true. I do not sit on any board of any business organization in Reedsville. I do not make any decisions or try to influence any decisions for any organizations, businesses, or individuals in regards to their business affairs. So, I am a council person up here, not an individual, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. One of the things I'd like to announce, that the Kiwanis Club this Thursday has the great opportunity to present a check to one of our high school students, Deonte Neal. He was chosen as one of the 100 best basketball players in our high schools in the nation. And he will be going to the Nike 100 Club Training Program later this month. So, the Kiwanis Club, our mission is to support the kids of our community. And so, supporting Deonte, we will be financing his hotel and some spending money so that he can get there, because we hope that will better not only his future, but also the status of our basketball players and our students at our high schools here in Reedsville, North Carolina. So, Thursday at noon, we will present that check to Deonte Neal.
Yes, wonderful, wonderful. Councilman Hurston.
Yes, I'll be very brief. I attended the Mr. Alliance meeting in May, and I attended the past county commissioners' meeting. And tomorrow will be the first day that the state of North Carolina, the Rockingham Youth Development Center will be receiving kids or students that will, will be coming in tomorrow. And so, our staff is ready for the training and development of the young people that are coming in. We have the teachers and the nurses and everybody on board to work to really make a difference in the lives of the young people. And the facility is very thankful for the support of the, of the community as well as we are partnering along with many of the other organizations in the city, such as the sheriff department, police department, and, and so many others. And so, that's my, and of course, the city of Reedsville. That's my report.
Okay, I have a relatively lengthy report. Planning board meeting on 5/15. 5/18, Team Reedsville Employee Appreciation Day. 5/18, made remarks at Q-Tuckus NC Hall of Fame event at Zion Baptist Church. 5/21, special budget meeting at city hall. 5/21, state championship celebration of the Rams basketball team at Zion Baptist Church. 5/22, Eggs and Issues event at Stoneville, that was dealing with youth behavior and the mental health issues in schools. 5/23, Lunch and Learn at Reedsville Fire Station 1. 5/23, Kiwanis Club meeting. 5/23, swearing-in ceremony of Officer Yancy. 5/24, Splash Pad ribbon cutting. 5/25, Family Fun Day at the lake, at Lake Reedsville. And 5/25 was a very exciting day for me. Took my granddaughter to the Splash Pad for her first time or many times, and she was overwhelmed with it, and I made a promise that day to everybody who was there, that I'm going to get her under the big bucket sometime soon. And I'm going to do that.
You will let us know.
Well, I'm going to put it up, I'm going to put it on Facebook, so. I'll have to get up the nerve to do it before, so I won't be able to let you know right away. Let's see, 5/30, Kiwanis Club meeting. 5/30, manager-mayor meeting in Madison. 6/4, Monroe School Awards Day. 6/6, Kiwanis Club meeting. 6/7, Clean Sweep Operation on Amherst Street. 6/7, Dave Gerald's funeral at First Baptist on Main Street, it was very sad. 6/8, Habitat for Humanity's Celebration and Dedication at Jerusalem Holiness Church. 6/8, Mental Health Seminar at Galilee Holiness Church. And 6/8, WLC Forklift Grand Opening on Freeway Drive. We've got Jennifer here tonight from the chamber. Jennifer, pronounce your last name.
Lester.
Lester, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members, and good evening to our city manager. Again, I'm Jennifer Lester. I am serving as the board for the Reedsville Chamber, serving as a chair of the board of the Reedsville Chamber this year, and I'm here on behalf of the chamber and Diane, who could not be with us tonight. A couple announcements that I want to bring to your attention. The chamber is partnering with the Partnership for Children- The chamber is partnering with the Partnership for Children to show their locally-produced documentary, An Unusual Reason. If you haven't already seen it, this would be a great opportunity to do so. It explores the connection between childcare and the economy, and it's actually tomorrow, the 12th, from 3:00 to 4:30 at the Carriage House, but RSVPs are required. So if you're interested in attending, you haven't seen it yet, that's a great opportunity to do so. I hope you're available to do that. You all are very aware of the Rocket Reesville events this summer and the concert series, but we do have, this weekend, we do have both of those coming up as well. And then July 18th is the Ice Cream Social for the chamber, and that will be at the Splash Pad, so you all can come and enjoy yourselves there. In July, on the 30th, something that I'm very excited about, the chamber is hosting a Topics at 12 event, Building Our Future Together, uniting local schools and businesses for impactful internships. So, Rockingham County School System, the Community College where I work, and Bethany Community Schools are going to come together and have a conversation with business and industry about how they can get involved in internships at any of those institutions. So we're really excited about that and hope anybody who's interested will tune in. There are quite a few ribbon cuttings upcoming that we want to point your attention to, beginning with tomorrow at Reesville High School. As the other high schools in the county, they have received an Anna Tamas table, and if you haven't seen that yet, that's an amazing table that, well, I don't want to give too much of it away, I don't want to steal their thunder tomorrow, but it's really cool, you need to come see it. That's going to be at 12:00 PM at Reesville High School tomorrow for that ribbon cutting. And then the 14th, we have Royalty Healthcare. On the 28th, Got Dogs LLC. On July 12th, Carolina Strong Home Improvement. And July 19th, North Star Military Surplus. And then on your paper, you can also see, we're really excited to have four new members to report this month, so we're really appreciative of all of them. North Star Military Surplus, Angels Do Beauty, Devoted Health, and Emma Crabtree Edward Jones. We, as a reminder, we don't have a coffee in July, but the Ice Cream Social will take the place at that event. So lots of really exciting things happening at the chamber. We're really thankful for your support and the city's partnership. And if there's any questions, I can do my best to try to answer those, but otherwise, I appreciate your time.
Jennifer, we appreciate you guys more than you know.
Thank you.
Okay, announcement of board and commission appointment.
I think there was only one for today. That was a recommendation by the Reesville Downtown Corporation for Brady Slade Jr. to be on the main tier of the block for everybody unanimous with Mr. Slade to the off-line.
Okay. Like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who came out tonight to be with us. We do appreciate your attendance, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second. Got a motion and a second? Anybody who wants to stay an extra 30 minutes? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you all.